I'd like to call this meeting of the Zion City Council to order. The clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner McKinney?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Pastor Davy Adams?
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we just thank you for this night again, Lord. Here we are, by your grace and by your goodness. Father, we just humble ourselves in your presence. And we thank you, God, for each person here, Lord. We thank you for our mayor, the city council, and the people that surround on these walls, Father God, for their service, for their love for this city, for their labor, for their hard work, for their efforts. Father, sometimes thankless, but, Lord, you watch it all. Father, I just pray, Lord, as your word says, that to lean not on our own understanding, but in all our ways acknowledge you. Father, we do, again, tonight, acknowledge you. And we just confess that we need you. We thank you for how good you have been. We thank you for this amazing city. Lord, we thank you for the history. We thank you for the future, God. We pray for guidance and wisdom financially and, Lord, with people that are struggling, hurting, the poor, Father, the down and out. God, we just pray, Lord, that you would raise the city up. Father, we just thank you. We pray for wisdom tonight. We pray, God, for discernment and understanding. Lord, we just thank you for this time of year. We thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, who came, and not just came, but, Lord, came to die and to give his life for us, for our sins, so that we could stand here and talk to you tonight. Father, what a blessing. We thank you, God. Now may your blessings be on this place and on this meeting. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to your flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on the agenda, or agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So moved. A motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is a public hearing for the proposed property tax levy for 2015. I declare the public hearing open. Is there anything that anyone would like to say? I'd ask Director Knabel to please explain what we have before us on the tax levy tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Every year we're required to adopt a levy. The levy, a tax levy, is basically just the amount of money that we're asking for for our operations from the taxpayers. So we determine the amount that we need, and then it gets, there's a formula that basically says the valuation of all property within the city times the tax rate equals the levy. We set the levy, the dollar amount that we're asking for. The values are set by the assessor, and the rate is just a formula based on those two numbers. The amount that we can ask for is actually limited by state statute as the lower of Consumer Price Index increases, or 5%. If you want to go more than that, you have to go through, jump through a whole bunch of hoops for that. But CPI, the Consumer Price Index, that was set for 2015, was actually .8%, so actually less than 1%. So that's what we're limited to, not counting some other things, like there's new construction evaluations, other formulas that come into play that can actually bring it above that. So the maximum levy that we could go this year is actually an increase of 1.2% over the prior years, or a total of $6,445,558. This is about $77,000 more than last year, so even if we max the levy, we're only looking at $77,000 of revenue. We're also required by state statute to levy certain amounts for LLM Municipal Retirement Fund, basically employees' pensions, as well as the police pension and the fire pension. So there's set amounts that we have to levy there as well. The total of those actually went up by about $190,000 that we have to levy more over last year. So if you do a quick look at the numbers, we have to levy $190,000 more for the pensions. We can only levy $70,000 more in total, which means we have about $130,000 that we have to put into the pensions from other funds, the general fund, basically. So we actually, by maxing the levy, we're actually losing money in the general fund because we have to fund the pensions at a certain level. So it's kind of a bad situation to be in, but an increase of 1.2% this year, I believe we increased by about 1 and 1/2 last year, and we kept it flat prior to that, a couple years prior to that. If you look over the past four levies, it comes out to the city has increased its levy less than 1/2 of 1% over the past, annualized, over the past four levies. Good news is, we did see the EAB go up this year, about 2.2%. So we're still lagging behind on some other communities, which we knew was going to happen. There's always kind of a ripple effect as other property sales go up that, to surrounding areas, it takes a while to catch as well, but the hope is that we're starting to see our way out of some of the housing crashes and valuation drops in prior years. Just a little hope for the future, start getting the EAVs going up, which, again, because of that formula, EAB goes up, rate goes down, as long as we keep our levies under control. So.
David, you were asked to provide estimates on a maximum levy and a flat levy. Could you go over the numbers on a flat levy?
Well, a flat levy, what we levied last year was $6,368,695. So a flat levy would just keep that the same, meaning that if we ask for the same amount, with EAB going up, the rate will go down, you know, on a property. On a $100,000 property, if we max the levy, it's, again, formulaic, but because the EAB went up by more than what we can raise our levy by statutorily, property tax rate from the city would cause your taxes to go down because your value goes up, rate goes down by more. On a $100,000 house, the amount to the city would go down, on your taxes would be a decrease of about $25. If we kept it flat, it'd be a decrease of about $37, I believe, $37. So the difference in the amount that the city collects on a $100,000 house in a max versus a flat is only about $12 difference a year. Does that help? Did that explain the flat levy?
Yeah, it did for me. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Brenner?
Mayor Hill, gentle sirs, honorable servants, gentle lady. First disclaimer, I am a federal retiree, that is a simple statement of fact. Based on the .8%, eight tenths of 1% in the Consumer Price Index, there will be no increase in a federal retirement, nor in a military service retirement. Now, anecdotally, I have seen many cars in Zion with military stickers in their windows. I have seen many vehicles in Zion with retired military license plates. Our pensions are not going up. My medical health insurance is going up by $40 a month. My Medicare is going up by something, I don't know exactly how much. When you are voting on these matters, I would respectfully request that you keep these numbers in mind. I do not know how many senior citizens there are in the city of Zion, nor do I know what type of retirement benefits, if any, they receive, or what type of Social Security benefits they receive. But Social Security is not going up. And again, I would respectfully request that you keep these numbers in mind during your deliberations this evening. I do thank you for your time and your courtesy and your attention to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner. Any other comments?
I hadn't planned on speaking, but only $25. For some of us, $25 is more.
That's going, that's going down.
Or $33.
It would either go down $25 or $37. If we would max the levy, your tax bill would go down $25. If we kept the levy flat, your tax, your tax amount that you pay in taxes would be reduced $37.
Either way, that's money that can be spent in the community. It's kind of hard, as a taxpayer, to even think of paying more taxes. I don't see, the fiscal responsibility needs to start at every level, and I'm not just saying the city. I just overheard the previous township, and I believe they denied an increase in taxes. I've asked before, I understand, I've read the tax bills, I understand that it's not just, the taxes aren't just coming from the city of Zion. There needs to be an active pursuit of reducing the taxes among all taxing bodies. We, as a community, feel trapped. I can't sell my house, it's not worth what I owe on it, I have to stay here. Something needs to be done, whether it's $25 or $33, any little bit, even if it's $33 a year. It gives us the confidence that you are doing what you said you would do when all of you were elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments? Anyone want to respond, anything?
I agree.
I would, I would like to say that I agree with you also, but I think, and I'm going to get myself in trouble for this, and I don't care, I think we have to get people, good people, who, to run for office and become involved in our community and become involved in some of the taxing bodies where our taxes are going up. Because it's like you said, we can't do anything. I think we're 12% of your tax bill, and all we can do is control what the city's doing. And I just think it behooves, I hear all the time about people are tired of their taxes and the way that they're going up, and my response from now on is going to be then you need to get involved, and you need to run for some of these boards, and I'm not saying you, I don't mean that, but I just mean that, that people need to get involved and run for some of the boards where the taxes are going up. There are, there are, there are members on these other boards that are doing all that they can to keep their tax rates down, but the proof is in the pudding. I mean, those, our taxes are high, and our tax rate is high, and there's nothing we can do about it except control the cities. So I agree with you. And David, do you have something?
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say, you know, the elected officials here, and we agree with that statement, and, you know, we kept, we have kept the levy relatively flat over the last four levies. Now, we, again, the amount that we had to pay into the pensions statutorily went up by, during that same time, went up $700,000. So we put us, put $700,000 a year more into the pensions now, which means we had to cut elsewhere to keep the levy flat. We didn't increase the levy to cover those, those costs. We looked internally and said, okay, $700,000 more has to go here? For us to keep this flat over all these years, we've got to cut $700,000 elsewhere. We're cutting more as, as time goes on. So in defense of the council and all the staff here, that fiscal responsibility has been taken seriously to be able to maintain that, that level, even though, and as Mr. Brenner said, our, our cost of office supplies, our cost of gas, our cost of maintenance have gone up and, and hit the city just as it, as it did your pocketbook. So we have those, you know, you can have Consumer Price Index come out and say, .8% went up was the increase in cost of living. I don't know the last thing you bought that only went up .8% compared to the prior year. Costs go up for the city as well, and we're in that same pinch where if you have no increase in your pensions, we have no increase in our levies to cover those same costs. So we're still being fiscally responsible with those tax, with these tax dollars, as well as other revenues, and trying to control those costs to maintain a flat levy, even in the face of rising costs. So at some point, there's a tipping point, though.
There are brighter days ahead, and I think we have to make some hard decisions now to keep our tax levy flat and to keep our tax, and to have our tax rates start moving down, because when that happens, we'll have more leverage in attracting businesses to come into Zion. At a tax rate of 21.2-some percent, there are very few businesses that find Zion attractive. And for that matter, very few homeowners that find Zion attractive, because you might like the community and all that it offers, but you look at the tax bill and the tax rate, and you say, whoa, I think I'll look elsewhere. So we need to start moving that, changing that trend by affecting the tax rate, and that, that takes some pretty hard choices, because in order to affect the tax rate, and we can this year, because fortunately, we're in a situation where the EAB is going up. The past several years, we've been in a situation where the EAB is going down. So even if you kept the tax rate flat, you're still going to see an increase in the tax rate. But this year, it will be different. If we keep the tax rate flat, we will see a difference in the tax rate coming from the city of Zion. I don't know what's going to happen with the school districts, with the library. I do know what's happening with the township now, and all of you will, when the minutes come out. We did not increase the tax rate in the township and the park district. So they'll all be making those decisions, and we'll be making ours tonight.
And I, I think, on top of that, our problem is that as we keep our, our, well, we'll get into that when we're talking about the ordinance. Are there any other comments anyone would like to make? Mr. Brenner?
I may be a wee bit out of order. I would ask Mr. Knabel, last week, the State Assembly passed and the governor signed into law the re, the rebate of the motor fuel taxes.
Yes, sir.
Have we received that money yet?
We have.
Thank you.
The day after they started issuing the, the funds that they owed us.
Ah, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other, any other comments? If there are no other comments by staff or the public, I hereby close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Item number six on the agenda is citizens' comments, and we have Brian Dixon.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Brian.
I brought up the last council meeting, the concerns that a lot of people are still out of work, and it's very, very crucial, it's very urgent, that people need jobs. That's, that's the biggest problem. There's not that many jobs around here, and I think that's where, I think that's why people rob people for money. Now, it's not that, it's not nice, it's not a right thing to do, no, it's not, but they do it because they're so in desperate need of money, they need a job. They are in desperate need of jobs. That's why they rob people for money. It's not good, though. So, second off, too, I want to say, too, because I have brought this up before, that I understand about your concerns about safety of, in our community, I understand that, and I, I agree with you on that. But that's why you have security guards, that's why you have police officers that protects, to keep the community safe. But that cannot stop us from having fun entertainment, like having a movie theater and stuff like that, that I mentioned in the past. That can't stop you from not having fun entertainments for adults and kids to do. Even though we are concerned about safety in our community, which I, which I get that, but that can't stop us from not having a roller rink in a movie theater, things like that, anything you enjoy doing. Bowling alley, for example, say, let's say, for example, anything else like going, going somewhere, you know, we just need jobs. We need bigger and businesses in, you know, we need to have more bigger businesses than ever. How long is that going to take to get that going? Does anybody know the answer to that?
That's a really good question, Brian.
Because that's a good question, isn't it? It's a tough answer to answer that one, because a lot of people are really, they got families to take care of, and I, and, and really, believe it or not, they can't, they can't go without a job, and that's, that's serious. We got, something needs to be done about, and that, and the Radio Shack is vacant, and the OK Mart building's vacant, something needs to be take place in that, and the Green Tomato buffet, that's been vacant, too. Those three things need to be take place. So that's a big problem. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Brian. We are working every day to try and get more jobs, and I know that there are some, at least we've, we've talked to some local businessmen that are talking to us about bringing some businesses to Zion, and they've indicated that there are numerous jobs available in Pleasant Prairie, and I know it's not Zion, and we want to get them here, but there are jobs available at Amazon. So if you know anybody that's really looking for a job and they can get up to Amazon, they do have some positions available up there. And it's my understanding, and I, I'm not sure on this, but it's my understanding that there's a, the roller rink is looking at the Plaza and Winthrop Harbor, so you may have a roller rink soon up there. And the bowling alley, I believe, is open as we speak, on Sheridan Road between Winthrop Harbor and Zion. So there's a couple things. We don't have a theater yet, but we're working on that, too.
Okay.
So, and we are working on jobs.
Oh, that's good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is the consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Approval of mandatory regular meeting held on December 1st, 2015 at 7:00 p.m. And approval, but not release, of closed session minutes held on December 1st, 2015 at 7:21 p.m. Bills, vouchers 122372 through 122509, down on First Merrick Bank, total $2,120,891 for you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. And a motion? And a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number eight is consider passing resolution as follows. Eight A is authorizing the execution of a local agency agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for grant assistance for repair and resurfacing of 23rd Street, Edina Boulevard, and 29th Street, per Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. In your package of the resolution, a local agency agreement for resurfacing and repair of 23rd Street and Sheridan Road to Edina, 29th Street, Sheridan Road to Edina, Edina Boulevard, from 29th Street to Shiloh Boulevard. Cities in line receive a grant through the Federal Highway Administration's Surface Transportation Program in the amount of $785,338. The resolution agreement is the city's commitment to provide for the 20% matching share of this approximate $981,673 project. City's 20% commitment is $196,335, and will be budgeted accordingly in the next fiscal year's budget through the street and bridge and motor fuel tax funds. Though the council previously approved a similar resolution agreement for this project, the funding is now changed from a 70-30 match to an 80-20. This grant covers all construction and engineering costs for the project, and staff requests and recommends approval for this resolution. I would also like to add that phase two engineering will now be reimbursable at 80%, so we estimate that this will free up an additional $112,000 to go to future road programs, either next year or to cover matches for future grants as well.
What made that favorable change from 70-30 to 80-20?
That will be approved in the second week of January. So what we did is we pushed back our, our project from January 1st to March 1st, so it'll reflect the changes.
Just to be sure that everybody understands, Commissioner McDowell and I live on Edina Boulevard, where this street is going in, but we live north of Shiloh Boulevard, and this will be south of Shiloh Boulevard to 29th Street.
It has to be eligible.
Yeah, just so everybody knows. Do we have a motion? And a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Duteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Consider passing ordinances as follows, providing for the levy tax, providing for the levy of taxes for the city of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, for the levy year 2015, per Director Knabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You have already actually two ordinances, one flat, one max, depending on what the direction of the council is and what they'd like to approve tonight. Again, we're kind of at a tipping point here where we have a balance between flat levies, which I've advocated for in the past, and we have done, combined with a very significant budget deficit, operational budget deficit that we're going to be looking at going forward. Given that, my recommendation would be that we increase, we do the 1.2% increase on the levy, that will still result, again, because of EAB, a decrease in the rate for the city's portion of the tax bill, can't speak for other taxing bodies, but that, even with that increase, that would result in a decrease in the rate for the city, and not further put us into the hole that we have to deal with. I mean, it, it's not going to dig us out of it, but it can't hurt either. So that would be my recommendation, is that we pass the 2015 levy at $6,445,558.
Thanks, David. I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 15 slash zero, the flat levy at
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I said what I wanted to at the public hearing about it.
I'd like to, I guess I have a couple comments that I'd like to make, and I think that Director Knabel summarized what's, what's happened in the city over the past, since 2012. If we would go to a maximum levy, that means that on average, the levy has increased per year less than 1/2 of 1%. If we go to the 1.21%.
1.2 is the max, yeah.
Maximum levy, excuse me, if we keep it, if we keep it flat, if we go to the maximum levy, it would be less than 1/2 of 1%. If we keep it flat over the last four years, our levy will be eight one-hundredths?
Less than, it'd be?
It's less than 1%.
Less than 1/10 of 1%.
Less than 1/10 of 1% is what our levy have, will have increased over the last four years. And our problem is that, one of, I mean, part of the problem is that we have increased costs, as Director Knabel mentioned, and it's gas, it's insurance, it's liability insurance, it's everything in the city is going up. But we have a particular issue, I shouldn't say that, we have a particularly large increases in the pensions. Over the last, since 2012, we've had an increase in our pensions of $770,000. And if we keep the levy flat, we will have an increase in our taxes of $12,000 over that time period. So that means that we've lost $758,000. Now, we are, this, this city council is determined that we're going to have a balanced budget. So in the next few weeks, we are going to have to make decisions on $1.8 million worth of cuts, and they're going to affect people. And the thing that I've been asked is that, is, is our we, and by we, I think a lot of that is me, doing everything that we can and asking and doing everything that we can to increase costs and increase revenue throughout the city before we make some of these cuts that are coming. And And my response to this date is going to be, yes, we are, we've been, we've been looking for additional revenue sources, we have not been extremely successful in those, we've had some luck, but we have not been extremely successful. And I'm worried that if we continue to keep a flat levy, and I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner, that we are not going to be able to provide services that we have to provide. I think that we're on a tipping point right now with our police department, I think our fire department, I think our public works department, everybody is shorthanded. We've managed to do something in the building department where we're going to generate revenue, and we think we can affect our housing. But I'm just afraid that if we continue to do this, we're not going to be able to provide the services that we need to provide. And it's going to be tough enough, even if we would, because as Commissioner, or as Director Knabel has pointed out, that if we max the levy, we're losing, we're still losing $130,000 compared to last year in our general fund tax run. We're still going to lose that money. I believe you all, have you guys received this? Okay. This lays it out, and it's, I don't know, I'm just concerned about where we're headed and what services we're going to be able to provide. Commissioner McDowell has been a leader when we're meeting with other taxing bodies and asking the questions of what can we do to keep our, keep our city taxes down? And his question has always been, what does it take to operate your city or your park district or whatever it is? What dollar amount does it take? And then we should tax accordingly to that. And it's, and the answer shouldn't be, we're going to tax, get as much money as we can get, and then we're going to spend it and provide the best services we can. That's not what we should be doing, and that's what Commissioner McDowell has been saying. But I'm afraid that if we continue to do this, our question is going to be, are we able to provide the services we need to provide and continue to expend, have higher expenses every year? And I don't think that we can. So when this comes up for a vote, I'm going to vote against it, and I'm going to vote for maxing the levy. And I know, Mr. Brenner, and I know that it's difficult, I don't like voting for not cutting the taxes as much as we can, but I just have to think that, and I know, I'm on social security, I'm not getting a raise either, I, so I understand where you're coming from, but it's a $12 difference, which is a dollar a month. And it'll make a $77,000 difference on the money that we collect in taxes. So that's what I have to say. Is there further discussion?
Well, I guess I'll just add to that, that often is what we hear, is it's not going to make that much difference, it's only $12, it's only a dollar a month, but that adds up. And I think that at some point, we have to draw the line. And if we have to draw a line, this is a good year to draw a line, because we're not talking about a huge gap. It's unfortunate that I think we are in a position that we are going to cut services, whether we max the levy or not. And making up the 76, or 77,000 is not going to meaningfully change that. But it will make a difference to our taxpayers, and I think, I hope, it will make a difference to our other taxing bodies. When we sit in that joint taxing body meeting and make a case for keeping your levies low, keeping your levies down, I don't want to be in a position where they say to me, you voted to max out your levy. So what are you doing telling me to keep my levy down? And that's why I'm going to be voting for this motion that I made for flat tax.
I'd like to say something, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Commissioner McDowell that I'd like to see things just stay flat. But our responsibility as commissioners of this city, our primary responsibility is the safety of this, and welfare of this committee, or community. And I really feel if we had to cut services in our fight in police department, we'd be doing a great disservice to our community. We are responsible for the public safety of this community, and if we have to do anything, I'd like to see something else done. But I'm going to vote against it, as you are, because I feel that we do have that obligation.
Anybody else?
I'm going to vote against it for all the reasons Commissioner has explained.
Anything else? Commissioner?
I've been caught worse. I'm contemplating.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to pass the ordinance that, ordinance?
Flat levy.
At a flat levy.
Yeah.
Yes. So voting yes would mean that we keep the levy flat, voting no would be, we don't keep the levy flat. So clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
No.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
No.
Mayor Hill?
No. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there, I'm looking at, I'm assuming that we want to go with the 1.21% then.
The flat tax, or the flat levy, that motion?
Was denied.
Denied.
Defeated, right.
Right, by a majority. So is there a subsequent motion, then?
We have a motion? And a second. McKinney made the motion. Discussion?
The motion is for the maxing.
The motion, the motion is for increase the levy 1.21%. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
No.
Commissioner Taylor?
No.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item 9B, authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed 1.4 million general obligation refunding bonds, waterworks, and sewage system alternate revenue source series 2015 of the city of Zion, Lake County, Illinois, for the purpose of refunding certain previously issued waterworks and sewage system alternate revenue bonds of the city, providing for collection, segregation, and application of the waterworks and sewage system revenues, providing for the levy and collection of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, authorizing and directing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection with the issue of said bonds, authorizing and directing the execution of a bond order in connection with the issue of said bonds, and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchase, purchaser thereof, second reading per Director Knabel.
Get all that in one breath?
No.
This is a second reading. Last meeting, I mentioned that we're looking to refund, I believe it's our series 2006 bond series, but it's our water bonds that we're able to get more favorable rate on it, it'll save us about $60,000 over the remaining term of the bonds. And it says for providing, you know, providing for the levy of an annual tax, with all of our bonds, we have not done a tax for debt service, we actually abate all of that back by putting all the funds in escrow prior to the levy of the taxes, but as far as collateral for the bond purchasers, they need to know that they can get their payments through a tax mechanism, but that is not the intent to levy a tax for that, as we never have on the bonds in the past. We always put those, which was part of the consent agenda this time, actually, all the debt service payments for 2016 going into escrow so that we can abate the taxes back in January, so that will not result in a tax increase for debt service. But again, looking at any option that we can have to try and save cost, $60,000 over five years, six years, is $60,000. So I would recommend that we approve the ordinance to issue the refunding bonds.
Is there a motion? A motion? And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number 10 is Discussion, Authorization, and Approval. 10A is Tabulation of Bids, HVAC Maintenance Agreement for Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor, Commissioners. Consider receive free bids for the annual HVAC maintenance. Hayes Mechanical, $14,204. Northern Weathermakers, Inc., $16,064. McDonough Mechanical, Inc., $17,242. In 2011, when Northern Weathermakers was awarded our maintenance contract, there was numerous problems with our HVAC system. During this time, there has been fast improvement in the maintenance and quality of service. Staff has recommended retaining Northern Weathermakers as our HVAC.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a motion? And a second. Discussion?
What bid are we accepting again?
Northern Weathermakers, $16,064.
And we had problems with them in the past.
Previous contractors, not Northern Weathermakers.
Oh, I see.
They've been with us since 2011.
Okay, sorry.
It's my understanding, and just now getting things straightened out.
Yes, especially with the police department, it's an old outdated system, got to run it pretty good at this time.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number 11 is Announcements. December 24th and 25th, and December 31st and January 1st, city offices will be closed for the holidays. January 5th, 7:00 p.m., there's a Zion City Council meeting. January 18th, the city office is closed for Martin Luther King Holiday. January 19th, at 6:30, there's a Township Board meeting. And at 7 o'clock, there's a Zion City Council meeting. And are there any announcements?
I have one, I know the council is aware, but since the topic of savings has been coming up, the city petitioned the IPA for groundwater sampling at the closed landfill, we changed it from quarterly sampling to semi-annual. We were approved for that, so that's going to save the city $8,000 a year, so it'd be for the next seven years of the rest of our term, it'll save us $56,000.
We're going to talk about cost savings. City Hall has decided that rather than having coffee in City Hall, we're going to put a Keurig machine in, and everybody can bring their own coffee. That's true. Cost savings. Cost savings, it's true. So there's a need for a closed session, but before we go into closed session, I would like to wish everyone a happy holiday, depending on what you celebrate, and I would like to wish everyone, from me to everyone, a very Merry Christmas. And is there a motion to go into closed session? And a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
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 Aye.